This is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners for September 25th, 2018. I'm Commissioner Bud Blake and Chair of the Board this year. I'd like to start off by doing a few introductions. To my right is Commissioner John Hutchings. To his right is Labanita Bomar, Clerk of the Board. And to her right is the County Manager, Ramirez Chavez. Today, we're here to hear public testimony and hearing to consider approving a system of rates and charges for the Thurston Conservation District on properties of those portions of unincorporated Thurston County, the municipalities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tonwater, and those portions of the municipalities of Rainier, Tenino, and Yem within the Thurston Conservation District as their boundaries established in 1947 for collection of 20, in 2019 and 2023. So, the purpose is for Thurston County to seek public input on the proposed system of rates and charges for the Thurston Conservation District. So, I'm gonna go through a few House rules, just all on the same sheet of music. And the first one is, there's a sign-in sheet, and there's still people signing in, but I went ahead and got the first three so that we get things going. So, it's the first come, first served. And those who put the "yes" mark by it, I'm gonna call you up in the order that you signed in, okay? When you come to the podium, I ask you kindly just to give me your first name and your last name, and generally where you're at in the county, okay? You don't have to give me your street name unless you just want to by chance. So, there's gonna be a three-minute mark up here that Labanita's gonna post here in a second. You have three minutes to speak. When it gets to the zero, you're gonna hear this kind of an "ah" sound, right? I need you to finish up your thoughts. I want you to finish up your thoughts. We believe in First Amendment and all that good stuff, but at the same time, I'm gonna kinda prompt you to finish it up if you're midstream, because I wanna hear what you have to say. But I'm not gonna let you get into the four and five minutes and take charge of the whole thing, because I have a whole slew of people, and we wanna hear from everybody, okay? So, with that in mind, three minutes, as I mentioned, you cannot donate your time, so let's just get that out there real quick. And so, the Board deserves the right to not to hear someone if they're gonna use profanity or lewd comments, or blaming and shaming is what we kinda say. We're not here for that. We wanna hear everybody respectfully and what have you. So, we want reasonable conversation. Here's the thing I need to ask, if you please turn your cellphones down to whatever sound that's not gonna interrupt others while they're speaking or whatever. Mute would be perfect, so... What's the other thing? So, while we're here, if there is a land use issue that you have filed, and you think that it's gonna come to the Board of Appeals, or we have it already on record of one of appeal for land use issues, I'll kinda stop you if you're not, ask you to stop for that moment, and then later on, I'll give you a time and date when we're actually gonna have that kinda hearing for a land use issue, if you're here for that particular issue, okay? So, and then you have a comment.
Yes, in addition to that, Commissioners, there will be no electioneering as part of your public testimony. If there's any electioneering, I will ask you to stop your comments at that time. Thank you.
So, now that we got the House rules out of the way, so I'm gonna turn it over to the County Manager, then I'm gonna hear for Sarah Morehead, and then I'm gonna have any other staff that needs to come up, and then I'll ask one by one individually. However, if there's a group that wants to kinda minimize the number, that's fine. One can come and speak for the group. So, when I do call you, I'm gonna call you at one and two, or three at a time, so the second and third person knows intermittently who's behind each other, so we can keep the pace going, okay? So, turn it over to Ramirez Chavez, and two seconds, let him get mic'd up real quick. Okay, go ahead.
Got it. Thank you, Commissioners. I'd just like to report the number of public testimony, written testimony we have received so far. So, in front of you, there is a summary of 99 comments that we have received at the time that we prepared this report. Out of the 99 comments, 98 are in support of the rates and charges, and one comment is opposed to that. After we finalized the report, we received seven additional comments. Out of those seven, six are in support, and one is in opposition of the rates and charges. I have copies of all the comments, some are lengthy, some are short, so just for, to expedite the process, the summary is right here with the individuals who have submitted comments, as well as their position on this particular matter. And I have extra copies in here for the public after the public testimony, for you to take copies if need be. With that in mind, that's all I have to report in terms of the public comments.
Any questions of the County Manager?
No, I do not, thank you.
Any question? Okay. Sarah Morehead is the Executive Director for the Thurston Conservation District. Hello, Sarah, how are you doing?
Great.
Wanna come up to the podium and give us a little bit of background of where we're at and where we're going?
Absolutely.
You bet. And push the mic up just a little bit. There you go, right there, perfect.
Great.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Commissioners, and Mr. Chavez for having us here this evening. And thank you so much to all of the people that took the time out of their day to come in and provide public comment and public testimony on this issue, so I really appreciate that. I'm here to just do a brief overview initially about rates and charges and the proposal that we have provided, and the methodology behind the current proposal. Maybe.
Is the clicker not clicking?
The turn it on.
We didn't pay a bill for the clicker, that's what we did.
Thought the power went out again.
Oh, yeah, Sarah, before you start, we had a transformer down the road blow out earlier today. I think it's done, but the lights could go out, and we'll go to Plan B if that should happen, okay? So, just to let you know. We'll continue on, though, I'm gonna tell you that, okay? So, go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you. So, again, thank you guys for being here. Just a reminder about the Conservation District. We're a non-regulatory voluntary organization that helps, sorry, that helps private landowners, residents of Thurston County manage their natural resources. We provide technical assistance and financial assistance in those efforts.
Sarah, can I interrupt? You gotta turn that back.
Sure.
There you go, there you go, perfect, now you're... They can hear you, and they can see you, go ahead.
Sure. And...
Oh, but you can't see, huh?
Yeah, I can't see my presentation.
Ramirez, can you turn the thing for me?
So, you know where you're going.
That's right.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Will that work?
That works fine.
All right. You still have the floor, go ahead.
Great. Thurston Conservation District, non-regulatory voluntary assistance. We're one of 45 conservation districts within the state of Washington, and one of 3,000 nationally that were created after the Dust Bowl, originally to conserve soil and water resources. Districts all over the nation have diversified and adapted to meet the needs of their local community, and are community-driven organizations. So, for the last 71 years, TCD has been working within this community here in Thurston, unincorporated Thurston County, and the majority of the surrounding cities minus the 1947 boundaries of Yalmeria and Tenino that did not incorporate during our inception. So, we work with rural landowners, agricultural producers, urban communities, suburban communities, underserved populations, local, state, federal government, tribes, lots of nonprofit organizations and community partners. Conservation districts tend to function as the hub with many spokes of partners to put conservation on the ground and work directly in building relationships with landowners in the community. This is a brief overview and a quote from a local producer of some of the programs and services. These are organized by our strategic plan elements that our Board of Supervisors and staff went through a process to determine and identify. This was approved by our Board of Supervisors for 2017 through 2022. And those categories are water quality and quantity, protect and restore ecosystems, provide producer support, and preservation of working lands, rural and urban land stewardship, district operations, climate, change and adaptability, and local food production, education and outreach. And let me move forward. So, I'm actually gonna grab, I have copies of all of these, I forgot to pass out, so I'd love to send these around in case folks would like to follow along.
Sure.
The document itself.
That you just gave out?
Sure, well, there's a four-page document with the slides on there, and then there's some of our tenure, the past 10 years of highlights of our accomplishments. So, again, district activities have currently, or were supported by a combination of project-specific grants, state, federal, local grants, and we had prior an assessment, which is a local collection via Thurston County's property taxes from 1993 that sunsetted at the end of 2017. This proposal is to reinstate our local public funding via that, the property tax collection that will really mirror what our prior assessment collection is. That's up to $5 a parcel plus 10 cents per acre is our current proposal. So, our grant funds fluctuate from year to year, and this local revenue is what provides stability for district operations, as well as allows the district to serve the entire community throughout Thurston County regardless of those grant-specific geographies. So, any landowner anywhere with any natural resource issue. So, this provides that more reliable system of revenue, and allows us also to have local dollars that we then leverage to match with state and federal funding. So, rates and charges is allowed and provided to districts under RCW 8908.405. It's an alternative option to that assessment approach that I just mentioned earlier. And again, for our population, Thurston is capped at that up to $5 per parcel plus 10 cents per acre in our proposal provided to Thurston County. And the fee schedule that you'll see subsequently, you'll see that it meets that statutory requirement. So, this rate is intended to recover the costs of providing these public programs and services to our community, and to recover that revenue from those expenses. An assessment is really geared towards property, increasing property values for specific properties. And so, this rates and charges system, and the reason for this proposal is to really be able to calculate that direct benefit to each parcel, but also the indirect benefit, think watershed scale restoration. When we developed rates and charges, we went through sort of this methodology that's included here, that's defining those key programs and services. Those are those elements of our strategic plan. Our strategic plan, we invited lots of partners and community members to provide public comment on, that were incorporated into that final draft. We allocated costs for those services, both direct and indirect. This was an exercise that we worked with FCS Group here, who has calculated rates and charges systems for other conservation districts throughout Washington State, an exercise that they prepared and done with our Board of Supervisors and some of our senior staff. Based on that, FCS Group was able to determine the cost recovery, the per acre and per parcel to match those services provided. This is a little bit small on the screen, so I would encourage you to look on your paper copy here. This, again, just goes through that allocation process of what's the service that the district is providing, how is that, how does that affect landowners indirectly and directionally, and is that a service that benefits by acre or by parcel? So, an example of that would be a manure storage structure on a property could benefit one parcel having manure storage, but also could be a per acre benefit. You're consolidating that nutrient resource and preventing it from running off into streams. So, that's sort of the difference in that, and why this fee structure is appropriate for the type of conservation work that districts do. Again, I mentioned that the customer base is all of those areas within Thurston County minus the 1947 boundaries of Yalmeria and Tenino, and this details the chargeable parcels available. Another small table for you to look at on your printed sheet, based on all of the services that the district provides, those elements that are detailed out in the district's five-year strategic plan, there was a rate and revenue analysis that was done, recovering the entire cost of the services the district provides in that, or would provide in that five-year strategic plan on an annual basis, definitely exceeded the cap, the statutory requirement. So, what we did then was scale that down to make sure that we were within those constraints of up to $5 an acre, or up to $5 per parcel, excuse me, plus 10 cents per acre. This is just a slide to share this last year without an assessment, some of the impacts to our district, some of those other items that this sort of funding goes towards, which is funding for, you know, technical service providers at the district, administrative capacity, local match for state and federal grants, you know, countywide services to landowners regardless of grant-funded geographies, funding for local cost share, local protection district funding, and also support for landowners that are dealing with regulatory referrals. A summary of our proposal is provided on the next slide here, really recapping that the term of our request is for five years in this proposal, again, at a fee schedule of up to $5 per parcel and 10 cents per acre annually. So, that was a brief overview. I would open the floor first.
No, we only do it this way.
Oh, sorry.
You're addressing the Board, not the public.
Only the Commissioners have the opportunity to ask you questions at this point.
Great, then I would share, I would share with the Commissioners if you have questions. I also have FCS Group here present this evening to be able to address any specific questions about the rate implications.
Okay, if we need to, then, sure. Okay, so I'm gonna go with Commissioner Edwards, and then Commissioner Hutchins, and myself, okay?
How many conservation districts are there here in Washington?
Forty-five.
And how many of them fund themselves with a rates and charge type activity versus other? I guess some of them do it with grants. Do you know that breakdown of that?
Yeah, I think that that is a figure that John with FCS Group would probably have a better handle on, as he prepares a lot of the calculations for that. I would definitely say that the majority of the more populous counties within the state of Washington have been moving towards this rates and charges approach. So, certainly, folks like Pierce King are moving towards that. If you would like, I think you could probably get more detailed information from John, if that's allowable.
Any more information?
No. Could you explain for the viewing audience, though, the acronyms that you're using?
FCS.
Oh, FCS is the consulting group that the TCD Board hired in 2017 to prepare this rate study and provide all of the calculations for the costs associated with a rates and charges system.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
The other conservation districts, do they all have their funding specified for a certain period of time, I would imagine?
In the rates, in the rates and charges proposal?
Uh-huh.
I don't know that to be sure. I think most of them have some sort of a term associated that they renew.
So, it could be less or fewer than five years?
It's, I think there's potential for it to be any number of years.
And I'm asking, because I don't know, Sarah.
Yeah, sure.
If that, if we were to approve that, rates and charges, would we be able to specify what projects that money would go toward?
Or not go for?
Or not go toward?
And not go for. I would...
We don't know.
That will be up to the Board of Supervisors to determine the workload and the work plan.
The Board of, the TCD?
Yeah, the Thurston Conservation District Board of Supervisors. That's their role, as I believe, and administrative role, and perhaps the Board of County Commissioners may not have that role within this whole process.
Okay. Yep, that's, at this point, that's it, thank you.
Sure, a couple, you wanna reply back to him?
I would just share that the Conservation District, you know, certainly honors our partnership with Thurston County, and we work in synergy on a lot of different programs with district staff and county staff, and shared priorities and work groups. So, you know, a portion of this funding certainly would be used to continue that sort of partnership work, and, you know, we definitely want to carry out our work plan, which is mutually beneficial.
Well, I love the Conservation District and all, I support the programs, I really do, but I have general concerns, as many do, and I just wanna make sure if we're gonna do this, I wanna see what the parameters might look like.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of basic questions. I know it's kinda weird, but can you just define in this context, what we're talking about, what a parcel is? Is that like, go ahead, yeah, I'll let you answer it.
Sure, so...
A parcel, what is that, by definition, for this context?
Right, so, a property parcel, an individual parcel that receives a property tax as part of Thurston County. So, anybody that receives a property tax statement with those expenses, and in fact, many landowners might have seen in the past a line item in there for Thurston Conservation District when we had our prior assessment.
Sure, and a parcel could have a certain number of acres, is that how the next step to it, in terms of defining the more...
Yep, absolutely, so the flat fee of $5 per parcel is individual parcel for $5.
Sure, and so hypothetically, a person has five acres, it's $5 plus 10 cents per acre?
That's correct.
So, it could be $5.50 then at that point?
That's correct.
Okay, sure. And then, there is approximately 110,000 parcels throughout Thurston County, 109,000 gives you some change, and 431,000 acres.
Correct.
This is what we're talking about, in the totality of what we're talking about. Okay, sure. Oh, one more question, sorry. So, this is, the cap is $5?
That's correct. We cannot exceed the cap.
Not to exceed $5, but it could be, for whatever reason, we come to a, for whatever, it could be $4.99, $4.98, or even lower, if need be. I'm not saying that is, but it doesn't always have to be $5, right?
Absolutely.
It's not locked in at 5, is what I'm saying.
That's correct. Our current rate schedule that we provided as part of our proposal is between $2.99 to $4.99, depending on land use type.
Good, that's clarification there. How about the 10 cents? Is there any variations there? Could it be 9 cents, 8 cents, 10 cents, or anything like that?
It cannot exceed 10 cents.
Cannot exceed? Okay, good. Just wanna put the information out there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't know.
No, one more, short.
How many parcels are large exempt parcels possibly, like Warehouse or Timber Company or Port Blakely, or how does that figure in?
Yeah.
I was told there is a difference between those large corporate interests.
Yeah, I can certainly prepare and provide you with a report of the different types of exempt parcels and the number of those. We have that information within the analysis that FCS Group has provided.
Okay, I guess then I'll have to do a follow-up. Is there a difference between what the landowner that owns five acres is charged and the corporate landowner that has 50,000 acres? Is there a difference in the pay structure to those folks?
It would really depend on what the land use type was specifically. So, in our rate structure, you'll see that commercial and designated forest land, and agricultural land, and residential all has a specific rate associated with that. So, you would get some variance depending on the individual parcel and what it was classified in terms of land use type. So, it would really be situation-specific, and in our full proposal that was provided to the county, there's the rate schedule in there that designates by land use type what those different ones would be, so you could calculate based on any specific parcel if it had 50,000 acres of a certain land use type.
Okay, well, if I can't find it in here, maybe you can get it to me.
I'm more than happy to provide you with follow-up about that.
Thank you, thank you.
Don't leave yet.
I'd just like to follow up to Commissioner Blake's comment in terms of the, this is a proposal from the Thurston Conservation District that includes a rate increase up to a cap of $5 per parcel plus 10 cents per acre for five years. You, as the County Commissioners, as a legislative authority, you do have the flexibility to accept the proposal or modify the proposal as you see fit. That's within your purview. I just wanna make sure that the public understands that is the purview of the Commission, and you do have the flexibility to change that proposal.
Okay, anything else you'd like to say before we bring up the public?
Just thank you all so much, and we're more than happy to provide any additional information about the system of rates and charges, and we appreciate everyone's time this evening.
Yeah, thank you so much. Don't go too far, we might need you for such and matter experts, though, okay?
I'll be here.
Okay, great. So, we're gonna move into the public forum portion of this, and so, just kinda let it be official. When people come up and speak, I ask you kindly not to boo, hiss, and, or even clap for them right now, because I'm trying to get everybody to hear their voice and hear what they have to say, and I just wanna be respectful of that. So, I'm gonna call a person up, and then actually call the next person, the next two people up, and have the second person kinda stand up by the wall and kinda get online or on deck, if you will, if we use the baseball analogy. That way, they can just move up and start the process right then and there, so... Okay, so, and if, oh, oh, by the way, if I mispronounce your name, please, please, please forgive me in advance. I can do Russian, I can do English, but sometimes I can't do penmanship, okay? So, Stephen Morrison, you're here, sir? Yeah. And the next person is Justin Hull or Justin Hall?
Hull.
Okay, yes, sir. And after that, it'd be Esten Kornberg.
Sorry.
Okay, so, you have the floor, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to talk, to present to the Commissioners tonight. My name is Stephen Morrison, and I live in the Henderson Inlet Watershed. I've been a member of the Wyra Citizens Committee. I was very pleased to see in the Conservation District's handout many of the projects that we've supported and been a part of over the last number of years. I'm here to speak in for the proposal. I know that seems very un-American, that we want to tax ourselves. However, I think the question of adequate taxing always ends up a question of value for the money. Now, the question one could look at is, I was here and helped the Thurston County Commissioners acquire development rights in the Nisqually Valley some 25 years ago. That was a very expensive proposal, $2.4 million to help preserve that farmland. Without farms, we don't have farming. Thurston Conservation District provides technical assistance and education opportunities at a much lower cost than going out and assisting property owners purchase development rights. And of course, those were all done voluntarily. I wanna thank all the hard work that the Conservation District's staff has done. The work of the Conservation District is handled by its staff, and I think we have benefited from great opportunities to do those sorts of things. We need white hats in the community. Regulations cannot serve all aspects, but when there is, in fact, an issue of agricultural water quality, those sorts of things can be handled better with Conservation District and a farm plan, or a drainage plan that helps the property owner and preserves the farm and the farmer. So, I think the other thing that needs to be said is, I was here long enough to remember the original rates when they were established. I believe they were for a term of 10 years. And so, much like our school boards, we're looking at a rate which unfortunately has lapsed, but in fact, is a reoccurring, like a school bond issue. And so, I think the opportunity here for us is to correct some wrongs that have been done, to make sure that public resources are spent wisely, and to make sure that the residents of Thurston County are getting good value for resources that are being applied for. I wanna thank you for your time, and I hope I was, oh...
You're good. Thank you so much, sir, yeah, you're awesome. Thank you so much. Justin, how you doing? Esther is next after Justin, and then after that is Emily, is it Matt Carter?
Emily McCarty.
McCarty.
We're speaking, you can strike Emily.
Okay.
She's not giving me her time, but we were, I wasn't sure if I would be able to stay until...
Understand, sir.
Anyway, hello.
You have the floor.
My name is Justin Hall, I'm the Executive Director of the Nisqually River Foundation, and I'm speaking to you today on behalf of the Nisqually River Council, the 24 local, state...
Go ahead.
It's not a problem. The 24 local, state, federal, and tribal agencies in the Citizens Advisory Committee of the Nisqually River Council. We wholeheartedly support the system of rates and charges as proposed. Thurston Conservation District has been a valued partner for all of our 31-year history. We've worked with the district on many projects, including the farmland preservation... including the farmland preservation the previous person spoke of, salmon recovery, and near and dear to my heart, the environmental education, the Thurston Conservation District's South Sound Green Program, and our Nisqually River Education Project work to get students out in the field in support of their, doing hands-on science in support of their classroom science curriculum. And it's just been, it's a great experience, I love going out with them. So, again, the Nisqually River Council wholeheartedly supports the proposed system rates and charges. We've also submitted written comment. And then separately, I am a landowner in Thurston County with 10 acres, so $6 would be my charge, and I support, just as me personally.
Okay, thank you so much, Justin, yeah. So, next is Esther Kronenberg, and after that is Bob Barnes, and then after that is Johanna. Hello, Esther.
Hi.
Go ahead.
I'm Esther Kronenberg from the Green Cove Watershed. I joined the thousands of concerned citizens of the county in support of funding the Conservation District. It took me about 30 minutes to get these 20 signatures to support TCD. That's because it's a no-brainer. Everyone recognizes the value and importance of the work they do. Look at their five-year plan of education, restoration, and conservation. The work is vital, and five dollars per parcel is a bargain. Our county is facing serious environmental issues, especially with the expected influx of thousands more residents in the coming decade. We have limited natural resources that continue to degrade. We need to take action now to preserve the quality of life we enjoy. As you're well aware, the county does not have sufficient funding to properly or effectively steward our resources. That's why we absolutely need a functional and strong TCD. As your own environmental health director said when funding was lost in 2018, quote, "Reducing or eliminating TCD services in 2018 will have a significant impact on Thurston County residents and jeopardize many successful programs." That's even more true now. Yes, there has been turmoil at the TCD this past year. The WSCC State Commission Investigation found that two supervisors committed many violations, including financial malfeasance, and not following the rule of law or proper administrative procedures. As professionals in law enforcement, and the military, and county executives, you understand the seriousness of public officials overstepping their authority and using their office for their own special interests. As well, Mr. Johnson used TCD cost-share funds to install a minor transfer system on his farm, covering the site before it was inspected, and then pressured TCD staff to approve it. Imagine if a Thurston County resident attempted to get a septic permit fee without proper inspection. This is one example that clearly demonstrates the supervisors are serving their own special interest, not the public interest. The actions of these supervisors have severely weakened TCD this year. Since the investigation, they have continued to lose yet more funding by refusing to sign grants the TCD has successfully administered for years that fund vital conservation projects and are an important economic stimulus for the county. The good news is that this chapter will soon be over, at which point, TCD will rebuild itself with proper oversight and once again serve the residents of this county as it has since 1947. TCD is a vital community resource. We cannot build a sustainable future without it. If you have any concern for water quality, supporting a local food economy, teaching our kids about the environment, conservation easements, or stream and fish habitat restoration, you have no choice but to fund the TCD gladly and wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your words, Esther. Sure. Next is Bob Barnes, and then Johanna, and then after that, is it Paula Holroyd? Go ahead.
Thank you, county commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I support the proposed change to rates and charges...
Keep going.
...from the assessment system used in the past. We in Thurston County need a consistent and defendable funding base for the Thurston Conservation District. I'm a Thurston County resident, living out on Cooper Point. We need the consistent and dependable access to professional Conservation District staff to conserve, preserve, enhance, and provide educational resources to our community, to protect and sustain our quality of life for all living things. I have worked with TCD staff for the past 30 years. They are incredible at promoting knowledge, access to, and use of native plants for food, pollinators, habitat, and protection of our water resources and green spaces. The knowledgeable staff is amazing at working with schools, students and teachers, tribes, and community members to educate about the importance of environmental quality for people, salmon, and the web of life. They also provide feedback about the health of our watersheds and proactive approach to preserving, protecting, and improving the environment for current and future generations. The staff are the gatekeepers of our quality of life in Thurston County. They collaborate with the many government and non-government organizations to protect and enhance salmon runs, sustainable agricultural and forestry practices, and promote low-impact development. These valuable staff members create the potential for both communities and nature to thrive. These rates and charges are a small price to pay for protecting and maintaining and educating our community on positive life choices. I recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the new rates and charges system, and that it be passed. And I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Bob.
Go Thurston County.
You bet. Thank you so much. That's the spirit, right there. So, next is Johanna, and then after that is Paula Holroyd, and then after that is TJ Johnson.
Commissioner, we have some issues with the timer, so we're going to use the old-fashioned. So, LaVonita will give you a cue as to when your time is coming to a close.
Yeah, I think when the transformer and the lights went off, it numbed, and it doesn't do that extra 10-second thingy, so...
Thank you, commissioners.
Commissioner Blake, commissioners.
My name's Johanna, I'm from East Olympia. I am a local farmer, producing locally-produced and distributed beef for the county. I've been attending the Conservation District meetings for approximately five and a half years now. I have said in the past that I've been to more meetings than any of the actual board members, for whatever reason. Tonight, I think I'm going to surprise a number of the people in the audience with what I'm going to say. I think I'm going to surprise some of my colleagues, some people that I consider professional, have professional relationships with, and that's by saying that I fully support the rates and charges. With that said, though, I would caution you, and I would request that you do review for some type of oversight over this money of the taxpayers. That's your job, to be good stewards of our taxpayers' money, of my money, your money, and everybody's here's. I don't think the district has done that in the last five-plus years that I've been there. So, I would encourage you not to do a five-year plan. I would encourage it to be much shorter, and to encourage you to have some type of oversight over it. I know Mr. Chavez said that it's kind of an up or down, and it's up to the board, but I would bet the board would be willing to work with you on that, having some type of oversight from your end. And the reason I say oversight is things like five vehicles that the district owns or are paying lease on with five employees, yet staffers still billing the district for mileage.
Thank you much, sir.
Is that it? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Paula? And so then TJ Johnson, and after that is Paul Mikulowski? Go ahead, ma'am. Can you pull the mic down just a tad, so we can hear you? There you go, go ahead.
To the Thurston Board of County Commissioners, from the members and friends of the League of Women Voters of Thurston County. The League of Women Voters of Washington believes that the Conservation Districts have a unique role with landowners to encourage conservation of all resources, and the League supports the independent role, and which supports and encourages landowners' conservation work and assists landowners' efforts to develop sustainable business practices. We, the undersigned, therefore strongly urge your full support for the rates and charges assessments of five dollars plus 10 cents per acre per year per parcel to fund the Thurston Conservation District, and here are 62 signatures.
Could you just hand them to the county manager? Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Were you done with your time? Okay, sure, sure, sure. Okay, just want to make sure. TJ, you're next, and then Paul, and then after that is Jim Gouchet.
Thank you. For the record, my name is TJ Johnson. I've lived in Thurston County for 28 years. I currently live in unincorporated Thurston County, and I am a full-time farmer. I own and operate Urban Futures Farm, which is in the Olympia UGA. And I'm here to urge you to support the proposed rates and charges system. When I used to get the tax card every year, I wasn't always happy to see where my tax dollars was going, but I was always happy to see the Thurston Conservation District on there, because I thought it was like the best type of government agency. It was non-regulatory, it worked with people that wanted to work with them, was a small charge, and it provided clean water, conservation education, and so many benefits to the community. Now, as a farmer, I directly benefit from this organization. The first thing I did when we started our farm was contact the district, and we put together a farm plan, a conservation plan for the farm. That allowed me to be competitive and to get two federal grants in the last three years, both of which have helped my profitability and helped me expand my business. I've also used them for soil testing every year, and we always use their poultry processing equipment. We rent the poultry processing equipment every fall to process our chickens and turkeys. The lack of funding this year has had a definite impact. Phone calls are a little slower to be returned, soil tests are a little slower to come back. And most importantly, to me, I'm really interested in the voluntary storage ship program, and my business would be able to potentially expand and make me more profitable if that were in place. And because of the lack of staff at TCD, that program is going very, very slowly. I'd like to see that program move faster. I know at least two of the commissioners up here are strong supporters of local farms and local farmers. Commissioner Blake, I've seen you at the South Sound Community Farmland Trust dinners. You've eaten my food, which I've donated to those dinners. I've heard you talk about supporting farmers. Commissioner Hutchings, I saw your video at the Olympia Farmers Market, walking around, talking to vendors at the Farmers Market, many of whom have benefited directly from the work of the Thurston Conservation District. So, thank you for that. And I think you need to understand that farmers need a healthy, fully-funded conservation district so that we can do what we do best, which is feed the community and store our land. And then just in closing, the amount that's being requested is really tiny, and I was thinking, driving over here, it was probably less than the cost of a lot of people's morning latte, or the gas they actually burned to get to this meeting tonight. So, I'm happy to pay that assessment. It's a small price for a really big benefit for our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment today. Paul is next, and Jim Gouchet, and then after that is Glenn Morgan.
I didn't hear about the, how do I know when my three minutes are up?
I'll wave my hand, show your hand, sir.
I have been researching what's happening with the TCD for about a month now.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Paul Mikulowski, business owner, unincorporated Thurston County. I've been researching what's been going on for about a month now, which is not a lot of time, but I have learned a bit. I'm leaning away from this idea of funding this right now because there's so many problems plaguing the TCD right now that really need to be sorted out. I think that's an understatement. Conservation districts were set up originally, a lot of you know this, but it bears repeating for those who don't, to help after the Dust Bowl of the '30s, and to ensure that not just the economic fallout, but the ecological fallout never happen again, because it basically destroyed the food supply of the country. So, the real impulse behind conservation districts were for food, to make sure that this never happened again. Since those days, there's been quite a bit of mission creep, and I keep bringing this up because I don't feel it's ever really been addressed, that for the Thurston County Conservation District, the shift's been away from farms to just regular property owners. It's been away from agriculture to aquaculture. It's been away from rural, more to urban and suburban. It's been to, away from the people making the food, growing the food, and selling the food, to things like rain barrel workshops. I went to one of them, wonderful, don't get me wrong, I loved it. I'm going to buy a rain barrel myself. But how necessary is that? You know, I mean, anyone who can afford the $5 a month can also afford a rain barrel if they want to. So, these kinds of programs that seem nice to have, nice to do, nice for the community, you know, things like raised beds for kids' schools...
One minute, go ahead.
You know, these kinds of things are nice to do, but anyone with a school can get parents together and build a raised bed if they want to. So, you know, I really think sometimes there's this myopia in Olympia, and I don't think it's with you gentlemen. I do think that it is with some of the citizens, that there's still people living paycheck to paycheck. That, yes, $5 is a latte, but that's also a bill at the end of the year that they could have paid. So, I do have concerns. I'm also concerned about this investigation. I find that the only two farmers on the board seem to be getting railroaded off the board. And that's really alarming to me when you think that this was originally set up for farmers. I do think a full investigation is needed. I think it could have been avoided had there been some mediation. And I'm really concerned about funding this. I don't know that this is the right use of funds.
And your time is up, Paula.
Are we done?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. So, Mr. Jim Gouchet, and then Glenn Morgan, and Annabelle Kirchner.
Mr. Chairmembers of the committee, my name is Jim Gouchet. I'm a past board member of the Conservation District here locally. We have a small farm north of town. We grow tree and vine fruit and some nuts. We have been the recipient of grants. We have a conservation plan through the Conservation District. We also host a Kiwanis Garden, and with the help of Kiwanis volunteers, turn over four to five tons of food to the food bank. So, I've seen the good things that the Conservation District can do, and I think everybody here in the room agrees from the conservation standpoint, it does a good work. It's not the only show in town. There's a lot of other agencies that it works with, NRCS through USDA, a number of agencies, let's leave it at that. But what I want to talk about is governance, because the Conservation District system in the state is vitally important. They do good work as volunteer, as non-regulatory agencies, but from a governance standpoint, the system is broken. And from what I've seen, our Conservation District is one of the worst examples of it being broken from the standpoint of governance. People have different opinions about this, but take a look at the facts. Elections. We have 180,000 voters in the county, according to the Secretary of State. If we're lucky, we have 100 to 200 people voting in the elections, because they have a hard time hearing about the elections, getting a ballot, and voting the ballot. One of the challenges you have is if you fund this district, you are going to have to stand in front of the voters, all those voters that don't get a chance to vote, and say, "We're using your money to perpetuate the system." There's been other questions raised about financial management in the, that haven't been answered, in the district and governance issues. Salaries. One of the things that the Conservation District says is we can't have a real election because we can't afford it. But I understand that there was a recent audit of salaries, and the conclusion was that they're way above market. Let's put some of that money toward elections, and have a real election. Questions about financial practices, conflict of interest, nepotism, and questions about governance. There seems to be an ongoing battle between the staff and the Board of Supervisors that need to be investigated and resolved. One minute. And then there's the question of the interference by the commission in local issues and governance. There seems to be, and I'll let staff correct me on this if I'm wrong, a loss of community confidence. Despite the 100 letters you may have gotten, I understand that Thurston County and a number of cities have withdrawn the Conservation District as the lead entity from Wyra 13. The Conservation Commission has withdrawn state money recently. AmeriCorps has disassociated itself from the Conservation District, and complaints of property owners about some of the programs not producing the results that are promised. about some of the programs not producing the results that are promised. What I'd say to you in closing is, look at your alternatives, and look at neighboring Conservation Districts to partner with and local agencies to use.
Time is up. Thank you so much, Jim.
Thanks.
Okay. Next person is Glenn Morgan, and then after that's Annabelle Kirchner, and then Doug, is it Rushton? Doug Rushton? Okay. Glenn, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you. For the record, my name's Glenn Morgan. I live between Tenano and Rochester. I'm a fifth-generation farmer in Washington State, and I am currently on the Board of the Thurston County Farm Bureau, and I have been since 2009. And I'm in opposition to the rates and charges, and I'd request that you reject those, but there's a couple of simple and basic reasons why. And it's not because I'm opposed to the Conservation District overall. I've heard and agreed with the statements of several people who spoke earlier, where they said that they would prefer non-regulatory approaches to land use and to agriculture, and I agree with that. And I wish that those same people would also have testified against the critical area ordinance and other much more hostile and aggressive policies that were imposed by this county that actually were very nasty attacking property owners. However, this is very specific to the Thurston Conservation District, and there's a couple of simple reasons. I think that if we approve this rates and fees as proposed, that it rewards bad behavior, and at least, no, to start out with. And there was a letter that was presented to the Board by Supervisor Paul Pickett, and it basically acknowledging some of these concerns and the wrongdoings of the, of the TCD. But, it promises that if you only give them more money, I'm sure that they will start to do their job better next time. And so, the, I think that it rewards bad behavior if we approve it right now. And specifically, I think, things like retroactive unapproved pay raises for employees, questionable husband-wife kind of grant kickback schemes, falsification of minutes by staff, abusive expenses, and just other questionable pay and compensation situations, would encourage this Commission to be a little bit more careful about kicking money over to a program that, well, it's good in theory, I think, has some structural problems locally. This isn't something that's happened in the last year. It's been problematic for many, many years. We have at least five supervisors that have been involved with the Commission in the last six years, who have all raised these questions and concerns, including three of them that are currently being on the, on the Commission, two of whom are being driven out. Secondly, I think that it's worth pointing out that the majority of this money doesn't really go to help agriculture any longer. It's mostly for habitat projects. In fact, in the Dungeness Watershed, it's all about destroying agricultural lands. And so, I think that it wouldn't be a bad idea to start relooking at some of the use of funds that the Conservation District directs. And I think, as reiterated, what was said earlier, that the majority of the bodies have disassociated themselves with the Thurston Conservation District, and that includes concerns now about the, some of the voluntary stewardship plan and going to a different entity. If a local entity is not capable of doing this well, then I think it's best that we use that money for something else. And if you must approve it, please really shrink the amount of time that this would be approved, so that we can get on top of this and have a little bit more control over what's actually happening with our taxpayer dollars.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Yep. So, next I have Annabelle Kirchner. Yeah? Hi, Annabelle. And then Doug Rushton, and then Art Story. Art, are you here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, there you go. In a few minutes. Okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon, or good evening. I'm Annabelle Kirchner. I'm a private citizen. I strongly support rates and charges. Oliver Wendell Holmes said, "Taxes are what we pay for civilized society." This was back in the 1930s. To paraphrase, these very minimal rates and charges are the price we should willingly pay to help maintain Thurston County's environment in the face of rapid urbanization. These will benefit all of the persons in the county. The county's waters are already sprouting algae blooms every summer. Some are just ugly, but others are outright dangerous and toxic to people, animals, and especially small children. Shellfish beds are closed regularly because of pollution. We do need rain barrels, and we do need an education on how to use them, and how to keep our waters from being polluted by runoff from our cement and our lawns. The dust from various projects needs to be monitored, so the very air we breathe remains safe, especially for small children, for people with asthma, and other conditions. I know, some people believe that the less government we have, the less regulated we are, the better off we will be. Study after study after study, econometric studies for the last 30 to 40 years have shown again and again and again, this is not the case. Countries, counties, states with fair and equitable tax structures have lower rates of infant death, longer life expectancies, lower rates of poverty, and higher rates of education. We need a certain amount of regulation. Now, you have heard how badly the district has been performing. I would suggest you read thoroughly. It's on the website, the county, the state's comments on why things have been performing poorly. We need our Board. We need good regulation. I fully support this, and I think many of the people in the farming community do as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. So, is it Doug Rushton, right? And Art? Art, are you here on behalf of the county, or as a private citizen?
As a representative of the county.
Okay. I'll put you towards the end, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Just wanna make sure. So, after that would be Tony Wilson. Tony, are you here? Okay. Yeah. Just letting you know, you're after Mr. Doug here. Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Commissioners, I'm Doug Rushton, a county resident in the South Bay Area with a tree farm, and I do a little farming, and I'm representing only myself here, even though I've been on the Thurston Conservation District Board since the mid-1990s. I would point out, I'm a fourth-generation farmer. I've farmed on both the east side and west sides of the state, and I'd like to point out some, some key issues. One is, the TCD leverages local funding. It brings in dollars in match from other entities, federal, state, and NGOs. The voluntary incentive-based programs fill a niche that no one else fills. It keeps people out of the enforcement bracket and addresses problems that otherwise might not be addressed. All the citizens benefit, as Mr. Kirchner pointed out, from CD programs. Air quality improves, water quality improves, there's local food, lots of other benefits. Everybody gets a piece of it.
Hang on, sir. Just a minute. Romero, I gotta get the business here public, okay? Sorry.
That's okay.
No, no. Go ahead, sir.
The rates and charges would allow focusing on local priorities, not what the grant priorities are, and that's a key thing. It gives flexibility. And those priorities are vetted clearly and succinctly in an annual plan and a strategic plan. It's on the TCD website. People have the opportunity to get involved in that if they care to. Fiscal responsibility has been a question. It's been demonstrated by clean audits, both from the State Auditor's Office, the Conservation Commission, and until this past spring, TCD had a third-party, neutral CPA go through the books, and the fiscal agent, Amy, at the district at that time, was recognized for her work being of such high quality that she gave training all over the state. I think that's a testimony to how good the fiscal was. And while we can make improvements, there's always room for improvements. I think we've demonstrated that that can be done. Thank you, ma'am. There have been challenges, and I would ask people that are raising the issues to propose some solutions, not just criticize. Give us some ideas. $5.50 is what I pay. Funding's inexpensive. I'd gladly give up, I don't drink lattes that much, a Happy Meal. It's not a big, it's not that much. On my assessment, it didn't even show up as a line. So, I urged approval of the rates and charges for county funding, and suggest that you take Paul Pickett's suggestion of an advisory committee to heart. I think that could help restore credibility, both within the community and within our sister governing agencies. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. So, next is Tony Wilson, and after that is Annie Cumberley, or Cubberley?
My name is Tony Wilson. I live in unincorporated.
Tony, can you pull closer to the mic so we can hear you? Go ahead.
Take that. I live in unincorporated Thurston County, just south of the Olympia Airport, and I've been a resident here for only about a year and a half, but I spent a number of years in Seattle, a number more years than that in Portland, Oregon. And I've come to appreciate what the Thurston County, the Thurston Conservation District does here, overall. Full disclosure, and I'm gonna surprise some people, I did send a letter to the council or the Commissioners, suggesting that they might accept the rates and charges, put it in place, and look at the acreage allocations in the county, how many acres are in, either in production of agriculture or available for that, and think about how to allocate money to support farmers better than they have been supported by the district recently. There's also acreage charges, and those acre, for agricultural lands and forest lands, that money could be allocated differently to support farmers better. I'm not gonna go into much more detail than that. I wanted to talk about the cost that this represents, too. If a person, if a person goes to work in Thurston County when they're 20, and they work until they're 70, in that 50 years, they're probably gonna make, depending on education, somewhere between a million and $3 million. And if they own a home from the time they're 20 until they're 85, they're gonna spend $325 for this. That's, that's a set of tires on my truck. That's all, in a lifetime. And I can't imagine why we would not agree to that. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir. You bet. So, next is Annie, Annie Cubberley. Did I say that correctly? Please correct me.
It's Cubberley.
Cubberley. I'm so sorry.
That's good. That's okay. Thank you.
Patricia Harrigan. After that.
So, my name is, should I go ahead?
You have the floor. Go ahead.
Okay. So, as you said, my name is Annie Cubberley. I'm actually here as a private citizen. I live in Thurston County, sort of off of Cooper Point, out by Evergreen State College.
Sure.
I'm also a member of the League of Women Voters and of the Great Old Broads for Wilderness. I'm a master gardener, and I belong to the Sierra Club. You know, most life depends on the top six inches of soil. We really need to focus on conservation of soil and water in our area, and that's what this organization does. I've used, I've taken workshops from them. I've used soil testing. I really value the services that they do, and I really value that they work with kids. Those kids are gonna be taking care of our land in the future. They need to have that service available to them. I'm submitting 42 signatures in support of rates and charges that I gathered just in the last couple of days. Most people, it's an absolute no-brainer that we need to support this. And not funding this is not gonna solve the problems that are currently in existence there. They need a stable budget in order to be able to do this important work. So, I really urge your support. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you so much for your time. So, after Annie is Patricia Harrigan, and then after that is Rick Nelson.
My name is Patricia Harrigan. I live in northeast Lacey, across the road, pretty much, from the Niskewailey Wildlife Reserve, which doesn't mean anything here, except that I like nature. And I just wanted to reiterate that the Conservation District is concerned with environmental things, right? Land, water, air. And I don't think very much about the water or the air, but I really am concerned about the land, because that's where my food comes from. And I like to eat, and I think most of us here do, too. So, that means that our farmers here in Thurston County are VIPs, very, very important people. And the Conservation Districts were first.
Yeah. Look this way, so we can hear you.
First started way back in the '30s, after the Dust Bowl hit, and wiped away pretty much a good part of Texas, New Mexico, Oklahoma, Kansas, Nebraska. The surface of the land was gone. Some of it ended up in Chicago and maybe Argentina. I don't know. But, the reason why that happened is because the farmers at the time didn't do it on purpose. They weren't trying to get rid of the land. They were trying to make a living, trying to support their families on the land. But, they didn't know that it was going to all blow away from them. And the Conservation Districts were started after that, because they needed to bring science to the farmers. They needed to bring knowledge to the farmers. That's what the Conservation District is doing now. That's the most important thing. But, another thing that they're doing, this, this Conservation District, is they're, they've got education programs. And this is so very important, because they're bringing this knowledge, this exposure to nature, to what's going on with the land, to the kids. And we've got like 50 teachers that they work with, several thousand schoolkids in the districts of Griffin, Olympia, North Thurston, Tumwater, Rainier, school districts. They're all there, and their parents vote, so just remember that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All righty. So, Rick Nelson's next, and then after that, Ron Holtcamp, and then Martin McCollin, or McLellan. So, Rick Nelson. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yes. Commissioners, Rick Nelson, Waldrick Road. My family's been involved in agriculture in Thurston County since the 1850s. So, we have a vested interest in the Conservation District, and it is important that they thrive. They've provided a lot of needed services for us in terms of ability to do conservation practices and the like. However, they have had some problems, and I, I support this, I support this proposal with some caveats, such as I would hope that the Conservation Commission would come and provide some training for the Conservation District supervisors and the staff, and teach them to work together. And I'd also hope that they would guard against certain things like mission creep, such as, there's been, it's not so much now, but in the years past, there's been, some people had the agenda, they wanted to turn the Conservation District into a regulatory agency. They need to remain a non-regulatory agency, because if someone's to come out to my farm and advise me on conservation issues, and they need to be a technical advisor and an educator, not a regulatory agency, because they can't do both. Because you may be doing something that you don't even know is wrong, and the Conservation District will inform you that, "Gosh, you know, you need to change this," because, because if, if they also have the ability to regulate you, well, instead of doing that, they'll just give you a fine. And that's not the idea at all. Conservation Districts have served a very needed purpose in this, in this country for a long time. As previously stated, they were formed in the Dust Bowl era. And we've have a number of practices that we've done. We, we do support the Conservation District, yes, with these caveats. Make sure that they guard against mission creep, not to be, continue to be non-regulatory. Ask the Conservation Commission to provide training, so the Board is actually in charge of the, the district as they should be. And not only that, but make sure that this is available for farmers first, because that's, that is, that's what they were set up for, not to do projects for the cities, and that's the sort of thing. So, I'm speaking today in behalf of the Nelson Ranch and the Farm Bureau. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for your words there, sir. So, Ron Holtcamp? Yep. Come on up, sir. And then Martin McLellan, and then EJ Zeta.
Thank you. My name's Ron Holtcamp. I live in Olympia, Washington.
Sure.
I've been a resident here in Thurston County for over 40 years, a native-born Washingtonian. In fact, I was born the same year the Thurston Conservation District was created. Been a property owner for over 40 years. For all those folks who've spoken before me and supported the rates and charges, I totally agree with that. I am in full support of it as well. Certainly, there are problems that have been identified, but not providing funding to keep the district going is not the way to solve it. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you for your words, sir. So, Mark McLellan, and then EJ Zeta, and then after that, Ben Peterson. Sir, go ahead. You have the floor.
Yes. Good evening, members of the Thurston Conservation Commission. Thank you. A longtime homeowner, resident of Thurston County, and I'm wearing my Niskewailey Stream Stewards hat tonight. I'm the, I'm a graduate of the class of 2013 of the Stream Stewards. So, I wanted just to convey, and why I came this evening, is to let you know of my willingness as a landowner, a longtime landowner, to pay my share of the rates and charges that go collectively, as a community, to the, support the Thurston Conservation District. It represents, I believe, about a third of the budget. It's critical for the infrastructure of the organization in support of rural farmers and urban and rural landowners for ways to, to really think about how to be productive with lands and be safe with the use of those lands. I, I'm also really impressed with the Thurston Conservation District's education opportunities for youth, such as with South Sound Green, and their, and the, and a Congress of, of presenters that meet at Evergreen State College, with many participating school districts involved, just to name one initiative. But, I'll conclude to say, yes. But I'll conclude to say, yes, I'm willing to pay my share because I believe it's going to vital services that support our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Martin. So next is EJ Zeta.
My name's Zeta. I'm a farmer in Thurston County. My mama grew up dairying in Wisconsin, and my family's been farming since before they moved to America in the 1700s. I'm here to support the rates and charges. I've heard one Commissioner here say in the past that rates and charges would be a burden on the taxpayers, but you've heard from these taxpayers that it's not a burden. It's something we need. It's something we value because it provides services. It provides stability to our Thurston Conservation District. They need the rates and charges. We need it. And don't micro-manage the Thurston Conservation District on how they use that five dollars a year. They're the experts, and they know how to use it right. I've heard people complain that TCD was withdrawn as the Y-relate entity. I'm on the TRPC, which was reassigned the Y-relate entity. It's not a loss of confidence in TCD, but it's a loss of funds. TCD's staff recommendations were not followed by the Board of Supervisors. That resulted in a loss of $850,000 for salmon recovery, which TCD has been managing professionally and well for over twenty years. It's a tragedy that that was removed from their wheelhouse because they're good at it, and they're good at a lot of other stuff. I go to them for soil testing. They tell me, I don't need more nutrients. My cattle are providing all the nutrients we need on the land. I need to improve my pH. So for a song, they'll rent me a lime spreader, and I can improve the pH on my land. If we try and process our poultry by hand, we can do a couple dozen in a day. When we borrowed their featherman for a song, we can work with, we worked with an old couple down in Rochester and processed two hundred hens in a morning. TCD isn't regulatory. They provide services that let farmers do better farming, and farming is important to Thurston County. We've lost most of our farmland here in Thurston County in the last generation. Thurston County's growing, and the way to grow Thurston County is in the dense places so we can provide more services, save our farmland so we can keep growing food. It's good for our economy. It's good for our community. And we need Thurston Conservation District to help keep providing the services and the advice so we can do it wisely and well. Thank you.
Thank you for your words there, EJ. So next is Ben Peterson, and then I think it's Corinne Sterling. I don't know if I said the last name correctly, but you are up next, Corinne. Okay, so Ben, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Ben Peterson. I'm an organizer with the Washington Federation of State employees. As you all know, we have about forty thousand members in Washington State, over ten thousand who work and/or live here in Thurston County. Have a vested interest in what this body does, but also, of course, what the Thurston Conservation District does. I'm very happy to say that the staff at TCD unanimously voted to join our union earlier this year, and, you know, they did so for a number of reasons. Most importantly, because public service employees believe that public service matters. You know, we have a vested interest in working together, and TCD staff members regularly work with our members in the Department of Ecology, Natural Resources, and so on, to make sure that everyone, from our small farmers to, you know, the people who have a vested interest in the Puget Sound, are able to thrive. And, you know, it's, it's a common cause that we all have to make sure that our community benefits at every level. I have to say that the staff there are the most dedicated and thoughtful people I've worked with in any capacity. And I'm really just here to say on behalf of them that, you know, we're very interested in making sure that these services are still provided, to, again, small farmers, large farmers. You know, it's a tragedy that certain services have been lost because grants have been lost and because, of course, last year's rates and charges vote did not take place. But we can turn that chip around. We can work together and really make sure that this county thrives. And I hope that you all vote yes and fund rates and charges.
Thank you so much, Ben. So next is Corinne, I don't know if I'm saying that right because I can't read the penmanship, but is it Sterling, Corinne Sterling, Karen Sterling? Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. Let's go with Brianna Widener? Nope. How about Guy Hoyle Dotson? There you go, sir. I'll circle back to those two that I could not read the penmanship in a second. So Guy, and then next after that is Krag.
My name is Guy Hoyle Dotson. I'm a professional environmental engineer, and I am here as a private citizen and a urban resident of Thurston County. And I just want to note that urban residents do have a common interest with the rural residents as well. I want to emphasize that the Conservation Districts historically were created during times of crisis. And I think that we actually are on the verge of some crisis in the future in, with concerns to climate change. So I want to speak specifically to climate adaptation and the Conservation District because I think it's a very important issue, and that the rates and charges that are being asked for would help fund that kind of activity, and I think that that's very important. It would pay dividends in the future. We would be able to develop, the Conservation District would be able to develop the protocols that would help with that kind of activity. And so I want to urge you to go ahead and approve the rates and charges that the Conservation District wants, not only for the rural residents of the county, but also for the urban residents of the county. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your good words there, sir. So next is Krag, Krag Unsol, and then after that is Carol Goss. Okay, Carol?
So my name's Krag Unsol. So this is the second time I've addressed you today, and finally you got the lights back on so that we are no longer trying to operate in the dark.
Thank you for the compliment. Go ahead, buddy.
But I am going, I, first of all, I'm going to just say clearly for the record that I'm fully in favor of the rates and charges, and I want you to approve them. I also want you to do everything you can to restore the funding that, to work with the Conservation District to restore the funding that has been lost because of the malfeasance of the current staff. Then I'm going to take a little different tact. I'm going to talk about the three forms of alienation that are inherent in modern industrial culture. There are alienation from ourselves, there are alienation from each other, and most fundamentally, there are alienation from nature. I'm not going to be able to get into the alienation from ourselves and from each other, but I'm going to talk about alienation from nature. And it is clear, there is lots of research that shows that nature is something that can actually be prescribed. It should be prescribed. Being in nature is a healthy thing for young people, for middle-aged people, and for older people. Being in nature is fundamentally important. We have heard about how it's the top six inches of soil upon which all life depends. What lives in that six inches of soil? There are millions of microbes, and we depend upon those, and everything we do to our, with, to our forests, to our lawns, and to our, in our driveways, basically impacts those, those microbes in that soil. So the Conservation District is a fundamentally important organization, non-regulatory organization, to do the education with school groups, with homeowner associations, with people of all types-
One minute. Go ahead.
To teach them about how they interface with, how they intersect with, and how they depend upon, and nature depends upon them. So I really want you to adopt the rates and charges and do everything you can to fully fund the Thurston County Conservation District and its staff. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your words, Krag. So next is Carol, Carol Goss, and then Paul Pickett, and then after that is Joel Hanson. So Carol, you have the floor.
I'm sure.
All right.
Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing the public to come and speak on behalf of the Conservation District. Five dollars is not a lot of money. I see some people pin with five-dollar bills as a means of supporting the rates, and the five-dollar rate is extremely small. I live in the Squali Highlands. I'm part of a septic system, and I know that I could make a call to the Conservation District if I had any questions concerning how can I maintain and care for the system so that my system doesn't impact on, on my property. We've heard so many wonderful stories about what the Conservation District has done for the citizens, including farmers, including young children, including youth, including individual properties. Just in brief, restored a hundred acres of degraded habitat, treating a hundred acres, working with community groups in treating a hundred acres of invasive species of plants and animals, and restoring native habitat in addition to the field trips, the workshops, including the rain barrel workshops. But what that does is it helps create buy-in to children and youth to maintain their properties. And five dollars is a very inexpensive way of doing that. I also support Paul Pickett's recommendation to create an advisory group. Obviously, there needs to be more oversight, and things have gotten to a pretty sad state with the Conservation District. And that didn't just happen in the last year. This has been ongoing. But taking money out of the Conservation District will not solve those problems and will only exacerbate what's going on in our environment. I'd also, thank you. I'd also like to point out that, you know, we can call it creeping mission, but I think of what's going on is intersectionality in terms of farming, fisheries, urban and rural, and farmers all throughout. It's, it's a lot of different things. And the Conservation District is doing what it can in order to be responsive of what's going on, in addition to the development I'm seeing out on Marvin Road is amazing. The places I used to bicycle last year, they didn't exist. Now there's lawns. And the Conservation District is an important tool to be used when all of this is going on. So I can, I would really urge you to think of intersectionality versus mission creep. Thank you so much, and I support, I support the five-dollar rates. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. So it's Paul Pickett, and then after that is Joel Hanson, and then after that is Tom Crawford. Paul, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, and it's not entirely fair because I've talked to you before, but I want to just emphasize a few key points. And to start with, where I'm coming from, I'm a landowner in the county. I've been since 1988. I don't know if I'm a farmer, but I have pears, fruit trees, blueberries, chickens, and that, they're really valuable to me. I wouldn't say I sold it, but when my kids were little, I didn't give them allowance. I made them sell the eggs. So works for me. I was a 4-H leader. I was a 4-H superintendent at the fair for poultry. I worked it as an environmental engineer. I've worked with Conservation Districts all over the state for 25 years. So I came in and decided to run and be a Conservation District supervisor because I valued the organization so much. I'm here tonight speaking for myself as a landowner and not speaking for the board, of course. But I just wanted to, again, a couple of points. One is that I think the, this, this rate and charges assessment is an investment in our county. We're investing in our sustainable agriculture. We're investing in our resources that we own in common, the salmon, the shellfish, the land, the air, the water. And I think what's amazing about the Conservation District is that it lives on that interface of helping landowners coexist with those resources. So it's private property, and it's also public property. It's getting those to work together, and that's an incredibly valuable investment. It's not a partisan issue. It's, it's about the quality of a life in our county. So, and I'd also like to talk a little bit about accountability. People have mentioned the letter I sent to you, and I understand you've probably read it. And it's interesting, a lot of people say there are things in it that aren't in it. So I'll clarify a couple of points. I didn't mention, I did not suggest an advisory committee. I think it's a great idea, so you might as well add that. I was talking about the idea that to get the Conservation District-
One minute.
To get the Conservation, to move forward in the future. Again, I, I don't know, I can't acknowledge the problems. I think there are things that could be done better. I think there are mistakes that have been made in the past. I won't even try to say which is which, but I think the important thing is, I was on the PUD Commission for almost twelve years, and I, I just believe in good governance. I believe that you can always do better. And I thought a key matchup here was to take the rates and charges funding, and as the first thing we do, go in and take a look at our governance, bring in a third party, look at other CDs, look at nonprofit groups, and just say, okay, like, you know, what are we doing well, and what can we do better? And I think that's a, it's a really good start to rebuild our CD and restore confidence. So I appreciate your time, and I really do hope you support the proposal as it's been provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So next is Joel Hanson, and then after that, Tom Crawford, and then after that is Marcy Cleaver. So Joel?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Joel Hanson. I live in Tumwater, Washington, on a small acreage. I, I don't need to belabor all the points that have been made. I'll start out by saying I support the system of rates and charges, and I hope that you approve it. I will make two points that I think are important that particularly stand out to me. First, the Conservation District is a voluntary, non-regulatory agency. Nobody ever has to interact with the Conservation District unless they want to. No, they will never come onto your land and tell you what to do unless they are invited. I think that they play a role that, that only they play in our community. There are other agencies that do things similar to them, but no one acts in specifically that role. The second point, you know, currently I, I work for the largest goat milk dairy in Washington State, and it's right here in Thurston County. And it's a small, family-owned farm, and I help them sell more of their products. We sell products all over the country and all over the world. And coming from a small farm right here in Thurston County, but there was a time that I spent twelve years as an investment manager, working in finance. And I would say that this is one of the best investments I have ever seen. The five dollars, six dollars that I would spend on supporting the rates and charges personally would pay me back many times over in, in, in the quality of our environment and the services to landowners and to food producers in our, in our community. So I sincerely hope that you support rates and charges, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, sir. So that was Joel. So Tom Crawford is next. After that is Marcy Cleaver, and then after that is Barb Scavese. So Tom, go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners, for making time for the public to weigh in on, on this matter. Want to start out by saying, again, my name is Tom Crawford. I'm president of Thurston Climate Action Teams Board, and also a, formerly a homeowner in Thurston County, currently living in Tumwater. Been in Thurston County for, I think, going on thirty years now. So again, I support this proposal. I found, and our organization has found the Thurston Conservation District to be an excellent partner in working with the community on public education around climate change, around climate adaptation, as well as climate mitigation. I personally participated in an excellent workshop and seminar they put on at the Black Lake Range, I think, three or four years ago, on that topic, and involved farmers, and spoke directly to, and with very practical suggestions about practices and actions that farmers can take to deal with this problem. And, and as you know, you're currently working with other jurisdictions on a climate mitigation plan, and have also participated in the climate adaptation planning work with TRPC. Climate change is affecting our land and is affecting our water already in this area, in this geographic, you know, location, and it will continue to affect for, for many years going forward. And so our challenge is, number one, to how do, how do we adapt to that, and how do we make the best of the situation and make smart decisions? And obviously, farming and farmers are going to be very important and key to that, that solution set. So again, I found Thurston Conservation District to be an excellent partner in helping us and helping local farmers address these issues. And as we go forward to try to meet the targets that you all have committed to for Thurston County in terms of greenhouse gas emissions reduction, I think they will be a very important component of helping us find those solutions and practically work at the ground level, literally, with our farmers and with all of our community members to find those solutions. So I hope you, you approve this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Tom. It's good to see you. Next is Marcy Cleaver, and then after that is Barb, Barb Scavese. So are you, Marcy? Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
So I'm here as a private citizen. I'm a landowner. I raise cattle in Thurston-
I raise cattle in Thurston County, and my cattle make a lot of poop. So I contacted the Conservation District. They came out. They gave me technical services, and I got a manure management program done. And on top of that, I have since then hosted for the Conservation District classes about manure and pasture management so that there's a ripple effect in what we do. They leverage my abilities to, my knowledge, to model that for other farmers. So hopefully, that spreads out. I support the CD proposal, both in the amount and the duration, and personally, I would make it 10 years. I don't see any reason why they can't go longer or even higher, because I think you'll find that most people would say that's a nothing on their property tax bill. $350 over a lifetime, it's not much when you look at what you pay for fire and all the other things that are on their schools. So given that most of the pollution in this county is non-point pollution, it's important that the Conservation District work in both rural, suburban, and urban areas because it benefits everyone, especially given that most of our water that we drink in this county is groundwater. And if we don't keep the surfaces clean, that's all going to go down and end up in our groundwater. So let science rule where the money goes, what the Conservation District does, and that is keeping our environment clean. I think many of the issues on the CD is related to a dysfunctionality between probably the Board of Supervisors and some of the staff, and I think they do need some education and assistance in minding their manners and doing the right thing for everybody. That's all I have to say.
That's all you have? Okay, sure. Thank you so much, Marcy. Good to hear you. So Barb, you're next. And then after that is Bobby Hatton, Bobby Hatton. And then after that is, I think we're almost there. I'll just go with Bobby after that, okay? So ma'am, you have the floor.
Okay. My name is Barbara Scavese, and I live in the city of Olympia. And I support the rates and charges, and I request that the board approve them. The TCD provides some important services. I was looking at their district accomplishments, and I'm really impressed. They've secured farmland from development. They've helped farms convert to renewable energy, and they've been doing some plantings in riparian areas that allow vegetation to grow and shade the rivers so that the salmon can return to them. We need to keep the waters cool. And I would like to see more of this, so please fund this. Thank you.
Oh, you bet. Thank you so much, ma'am. So next, is there a Bobby Hatton? No? Not Bobby? Okay. All righty. Let me see what Labanita has here, and I'll get us one more sheet here. Okay, so the next person I have, oh, Sarah, you're coming back? Oh, yeah, I'm gonna call you back up anyway. It's not a problem. This is a different, okay. Let me get through the rest of the public. So that completes the list. Hang on a second, Crog.
Art Starry.
I know. I got it. Let me get to it. So that completes the list of those who signed in for the public testimony portion. Some people did not hit yes or no on there. I want to make sure that you are captured, because I did not, and then some, I could not recognize the penmanship. And so by show of hand, is there anybody out there that would like to come speak before the board so that I make sure I capture everybody? Yeah, go ahead. Come on up. Sure. So let me take care of the public first, and then we'll go back to the staff portion, okay? And can you raise the...
I'm sorry, Phyllis Farrell. I neglected to sign up, but I have submitted comments as an individual and written comments as the Chair of the South Sound Group of Sierra Club. For all the reasons that have been mentioned here before, and I won't repeat them in the interest of time, I urge you to support the rates and charges proposal. South Sound Group of Sierra Club has approximately 2,500 members, and I'm speaking on behalf of the group. Thanks.
And just for the record, where in the county generally where you're from?
Oh, I'm sorry. Phyllis Farrell Incorporated, Thurston County.
Okay, great. All righty. So just to make sure, I know how people out there in the hallway, and I want to make sure I got everybody a chance to be able to speak. So is there anybody that would like to come to before and speak before the board? Anybody last called? No? Okay. So Art, you had something to say on behalf of environmental health? Is that what you're doing?
That's what I'm doing.
Okay. And real quick, yes, please. Because then I'm going to bring up Sarah, and then we're going to have some more questions, okay?
So I can, well, I'll stay within three minutes, I think. So I'm Art Starry, and the Environmental Health Division Director for Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. And as your staff, I can't advocate one way or the other for this proposal, but I did want to provide you with some information so that you can consider that as you make a decision on the rates and charges. One of the things that we're responsible for within environmental health is following up on complaints and trying to help resolve water quality problems or pollution, identify pollution sources and see that they get corrected. And in that role, we have a very important relationship, and I think an effective relationship with the Conservation District. When we find that there's a problem, and it has to do with land use practices or animal keeping or something, one of the first things we do is we have asked the people to, we refer the people to the Conservation District for assistance. And I think that fits very well with the county mission, how the county likes to see business done, where we're using the kind of the least rigorous compliance methods possible in order to achieve the desired results, which is to protect public health and improve water quality. And so it's been, we've been doing this for years and years, and in fact, it's actually built into one of the regulations that we have, Article 6 of the Sanitary Code that I know that you folks know about. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. The other thing is that the funding from the Conservation District assessment from 2007 to 2017, a portion of that has been set aside for water quality projects within Henderson and Isqually. And those have been used effectively, I think, by a variety of partners who submit proposals to the Shelffish Protection District stakeholders, which is then reviewed or ratified by the County Commission and the Board of Supervisors for the Conservation District for projects to improve water quality. Within environmental health, there's been a number of projects that we've proposed or that we've supported that have been funded, that I think have proved to be very beneficial. Everything from septic system riser rebates, which provide a small rebate to people who put risers on their septic tanks, to paying for classes for septic system monitoring and maintenance, to educational efforts with things, something, actually, different iterations of something called Clean Choices for Clear Choices for Clean Water. And then at one point, there's even small grants that are available to low-income residents who have septic system problems or who need additional assistance to be able to maintain their septic systems. So all those things help people do the right thing to help maintain their properties, maintain their septic systems, to help protect public health and the environment. So I wanted to just reiterate our role in this thing and provide you with some information to consider as you decide about the rates and charges.
You bet.
Do you have any questions?
None of you?
Thank you.
We know where you work, Art.
You know where I live.
Just to make sure, I had two people that are Korean in Brianna. Is there anybody? Nope, just double-check it. Okay, so Sarah, do you want to come back to the podium? And did you want to say something on behalf of it or part of the staff? You have the choice of either one or both.
On behalf of what?
You had your name here, and I didn't know if you want to speak in a non-staff role on behalf of it or not? Or we have questions as a staff member there, okay?
Yeah, absolutely. I was hoping actually to take a couple of minutes to address the Board of County Commissioners as a private citizen, not in a staff capacity at Thurston Conservation District, utilizing fully my First Amendment right to provide comment.
So you got your three minutes. Go ahead.
I, however, am not here to urge you in support of or against the rates and charges proposal, because I still think that that is inappropriate. What I am here to do is to come to you as a member of your community, as a landowner in unincorporated South Thurston County, as a young, new, and beginning farmer who just purchased a 16-acre farm, as a mother of the next generation that is going to inherit for better or for worse this landscape, and to tell you about some of the concerns and the hopes that I have for our community. I am concerned about an increase in development, an increase in population, and the pressures that that puts on our natural resources, the pressures that that puts on our agricultural lands in particular, and our food supply, our food security in this area. I'm concerned about an increase in regulatory regulation coming into this community, and options for landowners to be educated, to be provided with tools, and to be provided with assistance, and the opportunity to do the right thing. And I am hopeful that there will continue to always be a voluntary option and a voluntary mechanism to work as an ally with landowners throughout our community. Thurston County is a geographically fairly small county, but man, a diverse one. Very diverse politically, socio-economically, geographically, a very diverse community. And I think rather than seeing that as a weakness, we can see that as a strength. I think that we can utilize the experiences and the interests and the knowledge of all of the residents in our community, and I am hopeful that we can come together and create a future where our landscape and our community is respected, where private citizens and their rights are respected, where our landscape, our producers, you know, our environment is respected. And ultimately, my main hope is that my child will grow up in this community, on our farm, into the future, and raise his children and grandchildren in a community that is supported and on a landscape that is viable far into the future. So again, I'm not here to take a position either way on this proposal, but just to share my hopes that this community can come together and work together into the future.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, so stand there. Okay, put on your executive director hat, okay? Poop, bop, there you go. And then he might have some questions. He does, and I definitely have some questions, okay? So do you have any follow-up questions?
What is going on at the State Board that you can fill us in? I mean, is there a timeframe? Is there something happening? Have they reduced funding? Are they threatening? Can you give us your perspective about what is going on with the State Conservation Board over this issue?
I think there's a lot of things going on with the State Conservation Commission, and what I would first do for yourselves and members of the public is to direct you specifically to Ron Schultz, who's their Policy Director at the State Conservation Commission, who is the most up to speed on what their decision-making process is and what their commission has directed them to do as a state agency. Not being an employee for them, I certainly can't speak on behalf of them. They've definitely shared, you know, concerns and hopes and timelines with our district, and I would encourage the Board of, our Board of Supervisors to be the main point of contact.
I didn't hear anything this evening about the volunteer stewardship program. You folks are involved in the volunteer stewardship program, is that right?
That's correct.
Kind of coordinating some of that? Is that a monetary function? Do you get money from them to do that particular job? Or do you just do some coordination? What does that all consist of?
Yeah, so we have an MOU with Thurston County who was provided with the funding to do VSP, and we are a component of that grant agreement and are provided with funding to do a portion of the VSP work plan that was put forth by the VSP Work Group, mostly consisting of outreach and technical assistance and development of individual stewardship plans.
Okay.
Did I, one more?
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you. You asked some of mine, too. It had been mentioned that since the funding has run dry, that telephone calls are slow to be made and test results slow to be returned. Is that true?
I would definitely say that over this last year, you know, due to a variety of factors, but most significantly, our funding scenario, we have lost a lot of staff at the district. You know, in the beginning of 2017, we had 12, and now we have six. So with that funding cut and those positions gone, again, for a variety of reasons, we have an increased workload on the existing staff that are there to continue to carry out grant deliverables and programs and services of the district. There's been a tremendous impact and constraint put on our staff throughout this last year. The hopes of the district are that we will be able to increase our staffing capacity, particularly our technical capacity, and be able to fully meet the need of the community with the services and programs that the district provides.
And I know the answer to this question, because I saw your head nodding. The State Commission provides training, and has recommended staff and the entire, the Board and staff receive training. Is that something they do, and you would welcome that?
I would absolutely welcome that. And that is something that they do definitely in a variety of capacities. They have an excellent training that they have prepared and has been presented at some of their annual meetings, or the annual meeting of the Washington Association of Districts, on good governance models and structures, that talks about accountability, roles and responsibilities, powers and authorities of board, roles of staff in that. And I, yes, absolutely, I think that that is certainly something that we would welcome.
And it was one final one, and that is, it was mentioned also not to micromanage, the Board not to micromanage the Conservation District. But I take it real seriously, my role as an overseer of taxpayers' dollars, and just don't want to see it, no pun intended, go down the hole. So if the Board were to approve rates and charges, and if the Board were to require more often than not routine briefings and updates from the TCD, would that be not only welcome, but would it be over-managing, in your opinion?
No, I think that we would be very excited to continue to strengthen our relationship and have more dialogue with the Commissioners and be able to share with you the great work that we do on the ground. I think that's an excellent idea.
I would just hate to see money be wasted. But again, like at the opening salvo, I support the programs that they do, that the Conservation District does. I just want to be sure we're doing it, doing it the proper, proper way.
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
Do you have any others? To go back to you?
What involvement did either the district as staff folks or the district as supervisors have, there was a lawsuit brought, and there was $25,000 awarded on some records, issues? How did that all play out with, I know there was a supervisor involved? What was the entity involved in that litigation that was a record keeper for you or for the Conservation District?
Yeah, you're referring to Johnson v. WSU Energy lawsuit, of which the district was not directly involved in?
The district was not involved in that in any way?
Not directly. We're not a party in that.
So there's no exposure on that $25,000 loss there, as far as you know?
For the district.
Yeah.
Right. I would definitely defer those questions to our legal counsel.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I think that's going to do it for now.
For me, I have just a couple more technical, and if they're not, can't answer here, we can probably get the answers later on, I understand. So I want to go back to the total number of chargeable parcels. It's 1,09,759. Was there, I'm just super curious, how did that number come about, and who validated that number?
Yeah, so that was generated by FCS Group and utilizing the tax roll information provided by the Thurston County Treasurer's Office. So they received the information about the parcel data in Thurston County, and then from there calculated the land use types and the numbers of parcels and numbers of acres to assist in this rate study.
And that document's available anytime? I'm just kind of curious, because I'm curious. Okay, sure. I'll get with you later then, later in the week or whatever, as we go along, okay? How many, I know there's other counties who do this, but I'm curious, how many counties have the same kind of funding structure with the $5 cap and the 10 cents per acre piece there?
Yeah.
In Washington State? In Washington State?
Right. So there's actually a slide that I have available in here and available on hard copy, which, there's not many that can go above that, right? So most of the counties in Washington State are capped at that $5 an acre and...
So if the 39 counties, does it come, ring a bell? How many do this, same funding structure?
How many of them actually implemented or are eligible for implementing?
Implement, actively going on, yes.
Yeah, I can certainly follow up and provide that information.
I think the gentleman's about... Okay, well, just save it, and I'll come back to you then, okay? Sure. Okay, and then so, so I heard a lot about farming, and I'm always curious about the farming of cows. I heard that, I heard crops and everything. Does the TCD do aqua farming, cover down on any kind of aqua farming in any kind of way?
Yeah.
Shellfish, gooey duck, minnows, I don't know, whatever you do to raise, whatever, okay? So is there any kind of aqua farming?
Yeah, absolutely. So we certainly partner with a lot of small farms and large companies that... So, we certainly partner with a lot of small farms and, and large companies that do aquaculture in Thurston County. You know, Taylor Shellfish Farms, National Fish and Oyster, as well as a lot of small, independent folks and, and tribal shellfish growers as well. And we do that a variety of ways. One of which is to help assist, provide landowners with education about water quality and improvement of water quality, which is one of the single most important things if you are farming. Shellfish is, is clean water to be able to harvest. We definitely focus on that. We've had designated funds in the Henderson and Isqually Shellfish Protection Districts in those growing areas to assist in the reopening of those shellfish beds, increasing area for that industry to continue to grow and flourish, to do targeted, you know, water quality work, again, education, technical assistance to reduce upland pollution in those areas, and certainly work directly with those growers to continue to share the importance of their operation and their business in this community, and the importance of, of upland stewards to promote clean water.
Do you have any last final comments? Because they're going to go a different direction here.
Yeah, just to thank you, and I would encourage the questions that I wasn't able to answer to follow up with John Giliducci from FCS Group, who came down here to, to be of assistance, to provide those answers.
Sure, you bet. Romero, anything?
Nope.
Okay, so, thank you so much, Sarah.
It was very kind of you.
And my last question is, are you available over the time we go through this to get to whatever level we are, as far as a final answer on this? Are you available for additional feedback, comments, and what have you for the-
Absolutely.
Okay, sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And before I go a step further, no, you go ahead, yeah. I just want to say thank you, everyone who participated in some form of coming up to the podium, or just coming here and being a part of it, is what this community is all about, and I would like to thank you even further for honoring the three-minute time and the respect for those who came up to the, to the podium and listening and not booing, hissing, or even clapping as much, because we want to make sure we get through everything. So, okay, so with that in mind, I'll ask, what is the pleasure of the board? Is it to move the public hearing, close the public hearing? Is there approval?
Close.
Can you make a motion?
I move to close the public hearing at nine twenty-five eighteen.
Second.
It's been moved to second to close the public hearing for twenty-five September two thousand and eighteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned.